Further State Controller, Ms. Paquin.
Yes.
Mr. Rosenstiel.
Here.
Ms. Higa.
Here.
Ms. Yamamoto.
Here.
Ms. Hendricks.
Here.
Mr. Keely.
Here.
And for the Director of Finance, Ms. Juan Hernandez.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call. Oh, and State Secretary Lieutenant of Public Construction, Ms. Zuma.
Yeah.
You have a call.
Thanks very much, Lamont. All right, our first action item is approval of the Board Agenda. I would hope that someone would move it with flexibility, please.
I do.
Any further discussions? We can do that with flexibility, Karen. Are you good with that?
Yes, absolutely.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Any abstentions? All righty, we've approved our agenda. We're going to get right into business. Lisa, good morning. Introduce our guests, please.
Well, I'll start by saying this is your long-term facility planning update. And today, I am pleased to introduce part of the team that has been working so diligently through the details necessary to perform the financial analysis so the Board can make a final decision in November. So I'd like to start by introducing Erin Patterson, to my right here, a Vice President with Jones Lang LaSalle, who is leading the team responsible for gathering the information for the qualitative and quantitative pieces of all three alternatives. And then Jennifer Ortiz, also a Vice President with JLL, is pulling the market analytics together for this effort. And together, they have almost 30 years of experience in real estate office strategy for corporate clients. And then to my left, we have Kathy Berg, Partner, and John Thompson, Principal Designer with ZGF, the architectural firm that's been hired to design a ground-up structure, which is one of our alternatives, for the purpose of comparison. Together, they have almost 60 years of experience in creating corporate vision through architecture. Today is really meant to be an overview of the detailed methodology and framework that's being used to provide the Board the financial analysis to make your final decision, as well as an opportunity for you to see firsthand the work that's been done so far on the design effort. So you'll see initial renderings today of how the expansion could be laid out, what it may look like, and how the structure would integrate with our current facility. And although this isn't an action item, I really do welcome your feedback today because we want to make sure that we're hitting the right mark. We want to make sure that any elements that you think are important for the financial analysis are included. And so it'd be great to hear after the presentation if there's anything that you would like added or any questions that you have, so we can make sure that we're prepared to answer those the next time we come in front of you. Okay? So with that said, I'll hand it off to Erin to get started.
Thank you, Lisa, and thank you.
Oops, sorry.
Thank you, everybody, for having me this morning. We're glad to be here. So today, we're going to go through our approach and framework to the methodology that we're using to quantitatively and qualitatively analyze CalSTRS' long-term facility plan. So our agenda within this presentation is to quickly go over the methodology and approach, look at what the alternative scenarios are, how we are approaching the financial modeling and cost estimates, digging into the qualitative assumptions and analysis, and then how we arrive at our path to conclusion and recommendations ultimately. So with that being said, I would like to highlight that the intent of this presentation today is really to go over, again, the methodology and approach. There's no intent here to offer any recommendations, solutions, or viability around any of the scenarios today. We're simply explaining how we're arriving ultimately at our conclusion when we get to that point. So the background here, as we all know, is CalSTRS is considering a long-term facilities plan to accommodate the future growth of their headcount and business operations. And there are three scenarios that we are helping them to evaluate. And this is a headquarter expansion that is connected to the existing office building on the campus we're sitting in today, the purchase of an existing building, or leasing existing office space elsewhere in the Sacramento metropolitan region. So our overview and scope includes partnering with CalSTRS to evaluate and analyze these three potential opportunities. We're looking at that through a quantitative and qualitative approach. We are currently updating the financial model that we have from JLL that was done a couple years ago, so we're updating that with current cost estimates. And it will be structured around the three alternative scenarios that we've outlined. And we're doing this with consideration to current trends and market dynamics today that we see in Sacramento. And ultimately, our goal is to identify the most cost-effective and value-add long-term strategy for CalSTRS. Our overall project approach is this flow up here. And some of these pieces do work in parallel, as we're doing the analysis for all three scenarios. But ultimately, we're starting with data discovery, which is really the collection of various data related to CalSTRS' occupancy today, and where we see that occupancy going through the analysis, through the forecast period analysis. Part of this data discovery included stakeholder interviews with members of CalSTRS, stakeholders within the organization. And through those interviews, we were able to understand some of the organization's missions and objectives in expanding their headquarters. It's also helped us to identify high-level growth and other operational requirements needed for that expansion. Then we moved into market analysis. And again, that's where we're really digging into today's market trends, market dynamics, things in the workplace, things in the metro region, that really drive ultimately our analysis for these three scenarios and our final recommendation. We're looking at things like leasing and construction market indicators, and we're also validating those within JLL, with the Transactions Team, with the Capital Markets Team. And then finally, we're also considering a labor analysis and commute study, which essentially means starting from, the starting point is looking at what CalSTRS workforce commute is today, based on zip code analysis, and how that could potentially be impacted in all three scenarios. Then, of course, we have the financial model, which is the quantitative aspect, looking at all the cost estimates. And we're doing that across all three scenarios. We're validating that within JLL, also leaning on the Capital Markets Group, as well as our Project and Development Services Group, which supports construction in the area. And then, after updating that existing financial model for all three scenarios, we're moving into the qualitative analysis. Now, again, some of this is being done in parallel. And the qualitative analysis is really to help us identify the efficacy from a financial, operational, and risk perspective. So there are a lot of pieces in this analysis that cannot necessarily be easily quantified. So this analysis involves costing these more qualitative efforts and assigning quantitative value to them, so that we can ultimately weight that scoring. We'll dig into that a little bit more later. And then our path to conclusions and recommendations, once we have the qualitative analysis done and the quantitative analysis done, we'll be able to do a SWOT analysis, or looking at the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats for each scenario. And ultimately, we will come forth with a recommendation and timeline for execution. So right now, we're going to go over the alternative scenarios overview. We have three: the headquarters expansion, the acquisition, and lease. And these are pretty self-explanatory. The headquarters expansion, of course, is to develop and build a second office facility, expanding the existing headquarters campus. The acquisition would be the acquisition of an office building that would accommodate today's growth and future growth for CalSTRS within the Sacramento metropolitan area. And then the leasing scenario would involve leasing office space in an off-site building, also within the Sacramento metropolitan area, to accommodate that long-term growth plan. Within each of these three scenarios, there are a myriad of variables that we have to consider. Some of them overlap between each scenario, but some of them are also specific to each scenario. So I've picked out a few of the most important ones that we are considering within each bucket. For the headquarters expansion, we're really looking at the overall scenario cost, the execution timeline, the potential lease-up, business disruption, and capacity and flexibility of the plan. In terms of potential lease-up, what we mean by that is thinking about if we have excess office space in the existing office tower as we relocate CalSTRS' headcount to the new facility, how quickly can we sublease that space to help our cost position? Then, moving into the acquisition, a lot of these same variables, again. We're also considering the proximity to the current location, to where we sit today, move and build-out costs, and then also adjacency needs and business unit requirements, which are really critical to think about in terms of how CalSTRS works as an organization. Obviously, there's a lot of business units within the CalSTRS organization, and many of them work hand-in-hand with one another. So there is a need to have proximity and adjacency for some of these units. So that would be a really important consideration when thinking about an off-site location. So likewise, the leasing variables really reflect very similarly to the acquisition scenario. Again, really highlighting that proximity to current location, move and build-out, but also the lease terms. What kind of lease term would we really be looking at for a leasing scenario? And how would we plan to accommodate the future growth as well? Are we leasing in advance of that headcount growth? Are we, you know, leasing incrementally? Do we want to lease in a place where we can expand over time? So these are some of the things that we look at. And for financial modeling and cost estimates, Jennifer Ortiz has been leading that charge, so I'm going to hand it over to her for now.
Thank you, Erin. All right. With the financial modeling that we looked at over a period of a 30-year analysis period, beginning June of 2019, and with a, can you hear me?
There we go.
All right. You can hear me better now?
Thanks.
All right. With the financial model, we consider looking at 30-year analysis period, beginning June of 2019. And we are looking at a potential occupancy of the new expansion, headquarter expansion, as well as the alternative scenarios, beginning of Q3 of 2021. And the headcount projection is based on our evaluation and working in alignment with CalSTRS and with the organizational growth analysis, projecting starting growth rate at 4.5% annually, and gradually that decreases to 2.5% over the decade. In terms of the assumptions that we have baked into this model for all three scenarios, we are looking at 150 square feet per person from a workplace standard, and that's based on the assumptions and the direction the company, CalSTRS, is going into. And based on the understanding that we know that, you know, it is a pretty progressive number, based on the current standard, but that's the trend, as well as, you know, CalSTRS' workplace is started looking into. And that's in alignment with the state agencies as well, that some of the agencies that we've looked at, that they are focusing on kind of projecting at 150 square feet per person scenario. And regarding to the market assumption, so we really relying on heavily with our Capital Markets Team, is our markets team here in Sacramento area, to come up with the current market standard, right, as well as the practical lease term and into this financial model. So we really kind of baked into the practical lease term, not, you know, what's out in the market today. And that's what we're relying on in the financial model today. And in terms of the additional rent concessions and move expenses, as well as TI improvements that the landlords could potentially offer during lease-up, that's also baked into the financial model. Lastly, I wanted to kind of touch up on the financial assumption, as well as the discount rate that's used in the financial model. So we are using the discount rate that's consistent with the discount rate that was used in the last, previous model, that was done about two years ago, and that's based on the average return of the funds of the CalSTRS investment. And that's 7%, that's baked into the model at this time. Okay? And moving on to the model process and considerations, so I wanted to kind of outline the metrics, as well as the specific assumptions that goes into each of the scenarios. So with the headquarter expansion, and you can see that these scenarios and the metrics are very similar across different scenarios. And we're focusing on the headcount projections and the seat requirement, as well as the square footage requirement that's going to be delivered over time, as well as, you know, in the alternative scenarios, how many of the seats, as well as the square footage that will be required based on the growth projection. So that's what's going into the financial models in all three different scenarios. Okay? I want to hand it back to Erin.
Thank you, Jennifer. So I'm going to start talking about our qualitative assumptions and analysis. And I'll open this piece with thinking about how we view real estate, really. It's a tangible thing. Part of the reason I love real estate, it's something you can touch, step into, really feel when you walk into an office building, get a sense of either the company or organization's mission, their, you know, what their intent is. And even if you have a financial mindset, the likelihood is, when you step into real estate, whether it's a home, whether it's an office building, one of your first instincts is not to think about how much it costs necessarily. Okay, for some of you, that might be the case. And it does occur to me after time, but really, we think about how we feel in this space. We think about how it affects our, you know, our personal actions, how we move across a space, how we interact with people. And so that's really why we dig into a qualitative analysis. And again, these qualitative pieces are hard to quantify, and how do you do that? That's what we're going to take you through today. Sure.
Thank you, Dana. I just had a quick question about the space requirements, the 150 square feet. And I can't find it right now, but I thought that there were, in the materials, there was a chart showing comparable state buildings and space requirements, and what CalSTRS currently has now. And I'm not sure how you got to 150 square feet, because I thought I remembered a range of lower square footage per employee. And then I think the upper-level management was maybe 300, and then managers were between 100 and 150.
That's personal space? So this 150 number is conference room circulation?
Okay.
That sort of thing.
Okay.
So I know it's kind of confusing, but it's not the actual workstation size. And I think that what was provided to the legislature in the supplemental language, that's probably where you saw that, that number is basically the workstation sizes that we have right now.
Okay.
That was the comparison.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, there are often three different ways you can work at, look at sizing, and that's personal space, as Lisa just mentioned. And then there's also usable square feet and rentable square feet. So the numbers can often vary. And that's part of what we're looking at, too, when we're thinking about what we're baking into our analysis, both the qualitative and quantitative. JLL is fortunate to have a wealth of benchmarking to refer to, so of course, we do have the state benchmarks that Lisa has provided to us, but we also have benchmarks from our existing clients, both public and private.
Okay. And that space requirement, I use that for all the options, including the leasing option and the option to purchase.
Yes, that's being baked in for every scenario, so that it's held equal.
All right, thank you.
All right, Erin, we have a couple more people. Harry?
I'm keeping a list of questions, Dana. I don't know if you wanted us to ask questions during the presentation, or do you want them to go through it?
What would you like?
I'm happy either way. If, yeah, if there's something that you want to jump in with, happy to answer.
It's up to you, then.
I think, I think I'm going to defer to the end of the presentation, and then go through a series of them.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was going to do, too.
What we could do is answer the questions regarding the financial analysis, once Erin's presentation is over, before we start ZGF. That way, if they're fresh on your mind.
All right. Then I'll have you, I'll have you check in then, at that time. Paul, did you want to ask a question?
Well, I wanted to follow up on Lynn's, because I think
Sure, go ahead.
... was an issue that I think I'd like a little better understanding of. So I'm just looking at the footnote that says current tower workspace average is 200 usable square feet per person, will reduce to 150 in this new. So is that because the way in which work is organized now in buildings requires less usable space? I mean, what enables us to go to a, from 200 to 150?
There are a number of factors. So it is a usable square foot number, so it includes circulation space, common areas, some amenities as well. So the new expansion would potentially be in a different space organization that would allow for that number to come down. We're also thinking about it in terms of how the business units within CalSTRS work. So does there need to be any changes to the existing setup that would be put forth in the new expansion? So for example, if you have, you know, your research group in the current office tower, they're working in a certain way, is that working for them now? Can we change that? So those are the types of things that really would drive that change in square footage. The idea is also to comply with, you know, the workforce trends today. When we think about changing this usable square footage number, we want it to be a comfortable space for everybody. You know, you don't want to squeeze everybody to a point where they're not able to do the work that they need to do. But we also need to consider what is appealing to today's workforce, and how do you marry that with the existing workforce? So we think about all of these things in taking that number down. Do you want to weigh in on anything, or?
Yeah, maybe anything. All right. I was just going to add to the additional factors that we take in consideration, like everything that you already addressed, but also take an account into, you know, the new, more collaborative of a working space, where there will be more spaces for everyone to interact with, as opposed to personal space that's confined in, you know, a cube or in an offices. We're also going towards with a lesser office space, you know, kind of, you know, limited to only people or positions who will require private offices, and open up the rest of the floors, and to be more of a workstation, more collaborative of environment.
And will the design enable us to change that configuration if 10 years from now, 20 years from now, people are working differently than they are today? I mean, it seems to me that the world of work is changing more quickly than a 30- or 40-year building that needs now to be built in a flexible way? Is that what we're going to be doing?
Let's let ZGF answer that question.
Yeah, you're asking a really important question, and you're right, there is kind of a constant ebb and flow of work styles. So what we have been seeing recently are the trend to smaller spaces. Part of that's driven by technology. Our computers are getting smaller, our devices are getting smaller, and we're working more paperless. So there's less storage, less file storage than we used to have in offices. In this, for the expansion, there's also the potential to not have to rebuild some spaces that are already here in this building. So that tends to help us reduce the amount of square footage per person. The other big trade-off is personal space. We do see that a lot of organizations out there are reducing the amount of personal workspace to what was mentioned before. But to your point, we need to be very careful with that, that that could, that trend could reverse and go the opposite direction someday. So in all the layouts that we'll be taking a look at, we want to make sure that the floor plate will support changes over time. And we'll be able to elaborate on that a bit more.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Go ahead, Harry.
I'm going to weigh in, because my
Go ahead. Here, go ahead, because I'm channeling the whole
Yeah, yeah.
... article you sent us not so long ago.
Yeah. How do, how do the consultants think about the future of work? And can you give us some examples of the trends and changes that are taking place today? I think you've just answered that a little bit. So this reduction in the potential, why don't we just start with, can you give some examples of, you're talking about state agencies. We like to think of ourselves, I like, at least I like to think of CalSTRS as a blended model between a state agency and a private agency. You don't really get the feel of the DMV when you walk into CalSTRS' West Sacramento office. Could you talk a little bit about, maybe, examples of where we've seen companies transform their workplace?
Sure. What I think interesting about this is you'll, you'll see a lot in the media and the news about technology companies and the way that they're disrupting, but we're actually seeing companies across the spectrum, everything from product development to design companies to investing firms, move in this direction of changing their workflow. Part of it is the new tools that we have to be able to do that. People can work from anywhere. So it used to be that there was a requirement to come in and sit down at your desk at 8:00 in the morning, and you left at 5:00 at night, and you were pretty consistently there. With a lot of closed offices, you could have a one-on-one meeting in your office, and so the other associated spaces you needed might be more focused on large meeting spaces. Now, with more of an open office environment, what we're seeing is there's a need for more smaller collaboration spaces, where one or two people can go have a private conversation. So it's a slow shift in the way that we use space. I think the thing that we really want to be mindful of as designers of this particular building, it's easy to go too far one way. We don't want to create a seascape of open offices that don't provide people the ability to do good quality heads-down work. So we'll be thinking about, to Paul's point, the changes that we can allow for over time as work styles change, and also make sure that we're providing neighborhoods and smaller groups working together with subdivision between, so that the acoustics in the office are really supportive of the work environment. But I don't imagine that we'll go back to individual offices for everyone anytime in the near future, so it's probably more of a fluctuation of a percentage moving somewhere. We see companies going to zero closed offices, ranging up to maybe 30% or 40% closed offices, seems to be the typical right now.
Yeah, so, thanks for that. All of this is based on assumptions. And one of my jobs is to, like, balance the risk-reward of the options, and managing the risk of potentially either building, building on the campus, leasing, or buying an existing, they're all different risks. So one of the risks for me is the assumption that the number of bodies that we project that we're going to need for this organization is accurate for 20 or 30 years from now. How do, how do the consultants think about working with clients around actually the human bodies that you actually need in buildings, because of the ability now to work pretty much from any, a lot of work is being done from home
Right.
in coffee shops? So built into the assumption is that we're assuming the organization is going to grow, and people are going to have to commute to it. How do you think about that? How should we be thinking about that?
I think there's really two different answers to that. And one is probably one that Erin can address, is that ability to design the buildings so that they could be leased, or over time, you know, maybe you don't continue to own the entire building, so we want to make sure that there's a way for the buildings to be subdivided at some future point. And then within the space, I think it's looking at building systems that can allow change over time. So we may, as you said, have a significant number of people on individual floor plates here. Over time, that might change to different types of collaborative workspace. So we're trying to work to select building systems, structural systems, that allow changing of walls and moving systems over time, mechanical systems that would allow for reconfiguration of the interior space. And we think it's important to invest in buildings that we know will be adaptable over time. And that doesn't, to be honest, always mean the lowest first cost, so we have to find that balance between finding the most efficient systems that give you the flexibility to manage that change.
So I think that's a good lead-in to my next question, which was around, as the projection is to reduce from 200 square feet to 150 per square foot per employee, what happens to costs in these changing workforces? You're no longer in this cubicle, right, that separates you from me and me from you, and we're living in a world that we need to network with each other. We want people talking with each other, exchanging ideas, and all the researches. A lot of research is pretty clear that that's what you want in organizations, and in classrooms, et cetera. So as the square footage falls, does the price go up? Does it go down? Because that's another risk we have to mitigate. Because I like beautiful things, too.
Don't we all, Harry?
Yeah. I'm just trying to get a new couch.
Right. It's a good question, and maybe more complicated than a simple answer. You know, as you put more people into a smaller space, there's infrastructure that you need to provide to serve that group. But as you remove the number of fixed hard walls, and as we're able to go to less hardwiring, there are savings that we get on the other end of the equation. So it's a little bit of a moving target, and I think what most organizations are finding that if you can lease and build less space, that's the biggest savings that we have. So the ability to move from 200 square feet per person down to 150 should be a cost savings overall, even if each individual square foot costs a little bit more, because you're putting more people and more services into it. There's a diagram I wish I would have brought today that helps explain how we make the reduction from 200 to 150. What we find, to really give people an environment that they're comfortable working in, if you reduce their personal space, you do need to give back collaboration space and amenity space. But it's not at a one-to-one. So if you take somebody from 200 square feet per person, they might drop their personal space by 15 or 20 square feet, but you give half of that back to amenity space, and those amenities then help make the overall workspace more comfortable for everybody.
Two other questions, Madam Chair. 7% discount rate is the assumed discount rate that's baked into the model currently. In your experience, we're not even at a decision point yet, that's November, green light, red lights, December, November. In your experience advising clients In your experience advising clients on these types of projects, what's the likelihood or probability that that is the number that actually will wind up being the number at the end of, say we give it a green light, let's assume that for this conversation, that that's actually what will be the number will be at the end of the project?
So right now in our analysis, we are using the 7%, but we're also running sub-scenarios where we'll put in 6%, 6.5% as well. So we'll obviously see the difference. The difference isn't actually going to be that big. I mean, I'll let Jennifer weigh in a little more about whether that 7% rate will stick or not. There's a lot of, you know, we've had a lot of discussions with CalSTRS internally-
Right.
-as to how we arrived at that and why we are sticking to it right now.
So I wanted to just address your question about, you know, from our other clients, we've done similar analysis to, excuse me, whether that 7% is the magic, the right number to use. What it comes down to is a very personal choice of the company or the owner who's looking at this project. From your perspective, whether that's the funds, the cost of funds that you're going to be appropriating to invest in this project or somewhere else. So it's really depending on the company or your own, you know, creditworthiness and also the ability to borrow funds over a period of time. So we feel like, you know, at this point, the 7% was based on the average portfolio return, and it's what, you know, to us, this is the opportunity cost that you would have otherwise invested funds on in the organization. And that's what we feel like this is the most appropriate for now, but like where, excuse me, Erin addressed, we are running a range of sensitivity analysis with different rates. And at the end of the day, you can compare different rates, and I don't think, you know, over a long period, the 30-year period analysis period, it's going to make a huge difference. It's not going to move a needle just by dropping the discount rate by half a percent, but you will see the difference at the end of the analysis.
Last question has to do with parking and how you're seeing, how are you advising your clients to think about parking and the use of parking going forward? Are our future CalSTRS employees going to be shooting over here on their birds, on their iPhones at the same time with, you know, facial recognition that lets them into the door and that, you know, have a robot bring on their food? How do you think about parking? There's lots of asphalt out there.
There is a lot of asphalt out there, and there's a lot of change coming in. You know, I think the important thing is to think broadly about transportation. Even the city of West Sacramento is rethinking and adding new light rail lines. There will be different ways that people arrive at the building. Rideshare has certainly changed the landscape. Every airport, every facility that we work on has to think differently about how you have people arriving and queuing for that. On the parking front specifically, there's a debate in urban planning right now about whether or not we're going to end up with more cars on the road with driverless cars or less, because my grandmother will still be able to drive even after she's, you know, no longer has the vision abilities. She'll be able to hop in the car, or my 12-year-old will be able to. So there's a little bit of uncertainty about where we're going to land there, but I think the thing that I most like to have conversations about is not overbuilding parking and giving consideration to how parking decks might be able to be used for other functions in the future. So flat plate parking decks, which is something that we're exploring on this particular project, may be able to transition to usable space for something else in the future if the parking demand is decreased, and that's something that's definitely-
I thought that was my last, I have one last question. I'm sorry.
We could go for a while.
This is a more broader, I guess, macro question. In comparable communities as West Sacramento, it might be difficult, you'll be more knowledgeable than I am, I think, on this, so that's why I'm going to ask you, is when an organization embarks upon a project potentially of this size and this scale, to what extent does it have a ripple effect in a broader community? Terms of jobs, stimulating, does that happen? Does it doesn't happen? Is it a myth? Is it fantasy to think that that's going to, we're going to have some ripple effect on West Sacramento?
No, not at all, and that's-
And can you give us examples of where that's taken place?
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely something we consider, and actually, looking at the major considerations up here on the screen, for CalSTRS in particular, as we undertook, as we're undertaking this analysis, that's one of the things that really resonated with us was CalSTRS' role in the West Sacramento region as a critical stakeholder, both in the community and in the commercial real estate market. And I think that, you know, when we think about the tenure of the workforce at CalSTRS, the long-term commitment that the workforce has to this organization, I think that in itself has a spillover effect. It makes, you know, other people want to join the organization. And I think especially when you see CalSTRS' current footprint, the campus today, and the impact that it has, you know, just visually on the landscape, how that changes the perception of, you know, how you view the Riverwalk and how you view the side of the river. I think, you know, you can't argue that there's a real outstanding impact there. And I think, you know, depending on, you know, which scenario CalSTRS goes forward with, there will be different impacts on the community and on the neighborhood. I think in terms of, I mean, the first example that jumps into my head as, you know, a spillover effect is Amazon, right? So what has that done in Seattle and South Lake Union? Amazon is a client of ours as well, and the ripple effect is just ridiculous. I mean, there's no other way, there's no other way to put it. You do, you know, the city of Seattle, I think, you know, becomes at risk of being a one-trick pony to a certain extent. However, Amazon's presence there has grown the office market, it's grown the residential market, it's attracted a whole new population to Seattle, it's driven retail, it's driven the streetscape and development. There's, and now there's a plethora of high-technology organizations that have come into the area. You know, and kind of on the flip side, thinking about Washington DC, for example, also related to Amazon and high-tech coming in. A different kind of function of Amazon, they have different people there doing lobbying efforts, so on and so forth, but that's also changed the landscape of the DC market for in the office market, in the residential market. There's, you know, there's so many examples across the country where we see the impact of a company, of an organization, or an industry that really change how the real estate is used, going back to, you know, the questions you asked before in terms of, you know, why, like the very first question, going down to that 150 square foot per person, what is that being driven by? That really, that, the birth of that number really came out of the growth in high-technology and what high-technology was doing for their office space. And how that kind of perpetuated itself through all industries is, well, everybody wants talent, so how do we attract that talent? How do we get that talent? If, you know, Google is putting forth this office space that, you know, is highly collaborative, highly innovative, how can other organizations compete? And, you know, while the talent isn't necessarily exactly the same, there are definitely overlapping, overlapping functions. You know, everybody at Amazon is not a coder. You know, there's definitely administration with Amazon, financial, et cetera. So, yeah, there's, I mean, there's so many examples of how the impact of one organization can be so critical across a region.
And I think I would just add, when ZGF begins their presentation, you're going to see renderings of the development, and you're going to see Third Street, which is a street that runs parallel to our building, and how this development would simulate that Third Street pedestrian walk and the elements and the amenities that would be along that Third Street. So it'd give you a really good example of how it would simulate the city as far as having more activity down by the Riverwalk and that sort of thing.
Anytime. All right, Erin?
When we open up for Q and A later, everybody else gets a chance. Just kidding. Those are some great questions.
Or maybe not, because I think we all have the same type of questions.
Yeah, no, those are some great questions, and actually-
We might just have them all done by now.
It segues really well into this part of the presentation, I think. You know, with CalSTRS in particular, every client has, you know, specific considerations that we think about within both the quantitative and qualitative analysis. And what you're looking at up here, these are some of the major considerations that we really pulled out for CalSTRS in particular that resonated with us as elements that, because of who CalSTRS is, what the organization represents, what the mission is. Oops, come back. All right, I'm going to go back. All right. Because of CalSTRS' mission and, you know, who they are in the community and what, you know, the organization means for the state, there are a lot of things that we picked out that we felt we needed to highlight. So, you know, among those, as we've already kind of talked about already, are demographic and workforce trends. So again, thinking about what today's workforce expects in the office place, you know, and what, who CalSTRS is trying to attract and retain for their talent. Of course, we have, again, this long tenure of many of the workforce within the CalSTRS organization, and we want to keep those people, and we want to keep them and keep them happy and productive. At the same time, we also want to attract new talent, right? So how do we think about both of those cohorts within a workplace strategy? And so going forward to workplace trends, what are some of the aspects of the workplace trends that are very specific to CalSTRS? And again, some of those are, we've discussed proximity and adjacency, being able to have collaboration and movement within the organization, but also to Kathy's point, you know, having that space for certain functions, or, you know, people who just feel they need that head-down space and that privacy, being able to accommodate all of these things. More generally speaking, thinking about market conditions, what is Sacramento as an office market? What are the dynamics? Is there a lot of demand? What is the supply like? And actually, that brings up a good point, too. We talked a lot about, per Paul's initial question, that idea of flexibility. You know, we talked a lot about it in, relative to the headquarters' expansion, but we're really thinking a lot about the potential flexibility in an acquisition and a leasing scenario as well. You know, within that, we think about the office stock within Sacramento. Can that office stock accommodate what CalSTRS requires as an organization for workplace? Does it, you know, are the floor plates able to handle the load of the extra technology needed? Are the ceilings high enough to allow, you know, the openness and free-flowing nature that CalSTRS has in their headquarters today? We're thinking about all of these things in each of our scenarios. And that brings us to current state. So what CalSTRS sits in today? What is this space like? How can we replicate this, you know, both in the headquarters' expansion, in a leasing scenario, and an acquisition scenario? CalSTRS, I think, you know, this footprint is so unique. It's very unique to CalSTRS. You walk in the building, you can get a sense almost immediately of what CalSTRS is about, and that's important for not only the workforce coming in, but of course, the members and beneficiaries as well. You really want to drive that connection with the real estate that you're in. Then we're also thinking about competitors. Who CalSTRS competes with in the state of California? Again, this also comes from a workplace, a workforce standpoint, what talent you're trying to attract and retain, and also your members and beneficiaries. So this is something we're, you know, thinking about in all three scenarios as well, how each scenario impacts that category. And then the last three, heightened transparency, membership, and beneficiary commitment, and organizational culture, they kind of, they relate a lot. They're with heightened transparency just because of who CalSTRS is and their public entity, you know, there's a lot of, there's a need to be highly transparent with this process, which is exactly why we are looking at each scenario in such detail. We also have the membership beneficiary commitment. You know, you want to keep, you want to maintain that trust, and that trust goes from things like looking at all these scenarios and having that transparency, and also considering what is going into each analysis. So the discount rate, for example, and just being highly aware of what we are considering in each. And then lastly, the organization culture. Again, it's something that permeates within the real estate, so we want to be able to maintain that idea of culture in every scenario that we're looking at. And so, you know, when we're looking at leasing opportunities and acquisition opportunities, what buildings, what spaces can help us maintain that culture? And so again, why all the detail? That's specifically it. You know, there's so many very unique aspects to CalSTRS and the way they occupy their space that it's really, really critical to understand the significant variation between all these scenarios that we're looking at and analyze them with purpose. So this is actually a sample analysis up here, just to give you an idea of how we think about a company that's looking at a lease versus own strategy, how we are looking at it holistically in both integrating the financial aspects as well as the more qualitative aspects, and, you know, how we really weight them against one another and carry through that analysis and understand, so, you know, reasons why companies lease, both including financial aspects as well as, you know, things like enhancing occupancy flexibility. And then, you know, being able to pull those all together to get an ultimate understanding of what each scenario can provide for CalSTRS. And ultimately, this detail helps us objectively evaluate all the scenarios, and there are a number of qualitative variables that we are considering, and some of them are consistent across each scenario, and some of them are very specific to each scenario that we've identified with CalSTRS. And so for the qualitative variables, we've bucketed them into three categories. Those are operational requirements, environment, and experience, and risks. So within these qualitative categories, we have subcategories, and each of those subcategories reflect the qualitative aspects that we are really digging into to drive each bucket. So operational requirements, we think about adjacency, we think about the growth opportunity, space flexibility, and the space flexibility to accommodate that growth, accommodate changes over time as, you know, workforce trends change, as preferences change, the functionality of the space, is it really a space that allows for CalSTRS' objectives to be carried out, and the efficiency of the space? And then in terms of environment experience, we're really thinking about the impact on the inhabitants of the buildings, so CalSTRS' workforce, the members and beneficiaries, thinking about the brand and culture, thinking about the employee commute. We're looking at amenity access and parity, the member impact, and environmental and wellness. Just to dig in a little more, amenity access and parity, that's particularly important when we are comparing to the expansion of the existing campus. Looking at acquisition and lease opportunities, it's important to think about what spaces are available that can really emulate the same amenities, the same features that CalSTRS' building does today. How, you know, it's very difficult to negotiate two different locations that have very different amenities, very different qualities with, for one workforce. And then thinking about member impact as well, you know, this location is very easily accessible, the members are familiar with it, how does that carry forth in all three scenarios? And then risks, there's obvious risks to each of the scenarios, but across the board, we're thinking about the speed of implementation, business disruption, downsizing flexibility, and then outside disruption. And the way we go about educating these, the qualitative analysis, again, starts from the very beginning of our process where we talked about that data discovery. So a lot of the pieces came out of that, including the stakeholder interviews. And then on our side at JLL, we are a very broad-based commercial real estate services organization, so we have a myriad of resources within our organization that help educate these pieces, and these are among the groups within JLL that we've accessed for information to educate. So that includes portfolio strategy within our consulting group, that's the group that Jen and I are a part of. We've also got people and process, occupancy planning, workplace strategy, our location footprint group, benchmarking, research, capital markets, leasing, and project and development services. So all of these separate business lines, we've had conversations with all of them in this process, and will continue to do so as we carry out the analysis, but this is helping educate the considerations, the buckets, the categories, how, you know, what we're putting into this analysis. And on, up here is the model framework and output. This is really how we organize the qualitative analysis and make it quantitative, sign some numbers to it. So you'll see here, we have the three qualitative buckets we talked about, the operational requirements, the environment, and experience, and risks, and then we've also put in financials. So, and these, these weightings are- So, and these, these weightings are subject to change. Again, we are not at the end of our analysis. So until then, caveat there. So, but you will see that the financials will carry a weight in this analysis alongside the other three buckets. Likewise, the subcategories within each bucket will be weighted that drive the score for that category. And then ultimately, what will happen for each scenario, the headquarters expansion, acquisition, and lease, we will assign a score from one least favorable to five most favorable to score each of these scenarios relative to one another. So when we think about employee commute, for example, so right now, if we expanded the current headquarters, employee commute really wouldn't change. You know, again, we're looking at that zip code analysis where employees are commuting from. So we might score the headquarters expansion as a three, sitting in the middle of that. For the acquisition and lease scenarios, of course, we can only go on based what's on the market today. And we'd probably look at, you know, an average location for that analysis. But maybe the, you know, maybe the end result is we find a building that CalSTRS could buy that actually improves the commute for the workforce. So in relatively speaking, the acquisition opportunity would then score higher, maybe a four or a five relative to the headquarters expansion and lease, depending on the commute metrics for the lease. So those ratings are all ultimately totaled and weighting accordingly. And we produce a total assessment score. And those total assessment scores are used to compare all three scenarios and drive our final recommendation. Now that being said, if the scenario score is the highest, doesn't mean that's the one we'll recommend. You know, we'll consider all of the other things that, you know, we think about in timeline, et cetera, to educate that final recommendation. And so our path to the conclusion and recommendation is really going into this SWOT analysis and looking at the three with the total assessment scores, looking at the savings potential, really digging into the financial aspect there, and do the qualitative variables, how much do they offset the cost piece? So once we look at all three of those in detail, we will present those findings to CalSTRS. And then ultimately, we will make our final recommendation to CalSTRS as to what scenario for their long-term facility plan we think is most viable and suitable for their organization and objectives.
And that'll be in September, correct?
That will be in September, yeah. So I'd love some more questions.
Oh, we have.
Does anybody have any?
We have. Paul?
Thank you. Can you go back to the, the page, model framework and output?
Yes, I can.
This one, yeah.
This one's great.
Yeah. So as I read this, we're gonna make a decision and thirty percent of the weighting of our decision will be financials, of which, basically, a third of it is, is the NPV cost of the project, right? So what we're doing is we're saying that our decision is going to be driven only ten percent by what the cost is?
No. Okay, go on.
And what, 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 what I don't see here is I don't see sort of what I think we often do, which is we start by saying, let's set a budget for ourselves. And let's, and let's then deliver what we need to try to deliver within the constraints of that budget. So that doesn't seem to be the way we're going about this, which seems to me to suggest that there's the possibility that we could say, well, you know, this is a, this is, this meets our needs much better. Brand, culture, amenity, access, parity, member impact, environmental wellness, employee commute, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And financial matters are only a third, thirty percent in total of the consideration. So it seems to me that I don't really see that, that there's, there's a budgetary constraint on our decision-making. So maybe I'm misinterpreting this matrix. So if you could explain to me that a little bit more?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, no, you're not misinterpreting. Again, these weightings are definitely subject to change. Again, we're having conversations internally at JLL to understand where these weightings should, should be. So there's definitely room for change within the weightings. This is really in the context of the qualitative analysis. So, you know, we're looking to assign value to all of the qualitative elements that you mentioned, the experience, the downsizing flexibility, the environment and wellness. And we don't want to do that in a vacuum without considering the cost of that, which is why the financials end up being part of this as well. And as I said, the next step, when we look at, this, this guides and drives the final recommendation, but then when we do the SWOT analysis again, we're bringing into the, we're bringing in the financial conversation again. We're really looking carefully at, you know, the cost to achieve. We are considering the budget across our financial modeling, and I'll let Jennifer dig in on that. So, so yeah, we, you know, I completely understand your question. And it is, you know, it's a, it's kind of a fluid consideration throughout the process. What we're trying to do here is allow those other ingredients to be part of the conversation, to be able to understand the quantitative and the financial risk of not meeting these needs. And again, these scenarios are all objectively and independently scored. So it might be the case that the acquisition score is the highest in all of these categories. And it might also be, you know, the lowest cost. So, you know, we'll, we'll think about, we think about all of these things very objectively and specific to each scenario as we go through the analysis. Do you want to talk about the budget, Jennifer?
So with regarding to your question around budgetary constraint, and like Erin explained, that this is just in a qualitative aspect of analysis. When we go into the path of conclusion, the SWOT analysis, the financial will be looked at again, the economics will be taken into account. Another comment I want to add to that is, when we look at all three scenarios across the board, your, but the budget constraint really comes through itself just by looking at the leasing scenario and the acquisition, because we know obviously leasing elsewhere, without even running the numbers, we know is going to be cheaper than building. But, and depending on, you know, based on what we, you know, based on market availability and what's, you know, what's going to be practical, proximity to current adjacency to current location itself, the financial is going to drive in becoming that constraint, the budgetary constraint that we're looking into with the headquarters expansion scenario. So it's gonna lend itself once we go into that analysis. Hopefully that gives you a bit more context of what we're looking at.
So you're saying that the, that the, there's a, implicitly a budget constraint created by the fact that there are opportunities to meet our needs by leasing? And that defines what those lease rates are in the market today, define what our, what our general budget is? And then if we're going to try to, if we're gonna consider something that is, is more functionally beneficial from the stand, but, from, by building, then we, we have to be looking at that and looking at those incremental benefits over leasing relative to the cost that we already see would be the cost if we were to lease? So that the lease, the lease rates are our budgetary constraint?
So that's not what I'm saying. I think I understand where you're coming from. I think it's about, you know, fifty, fifty on, if I understand you correctly. What, what I'm saying is not the leasing rates determine the budget for the, for the headquarters expansion. But work, when we're comparing all different scenario, all three scenarios, what's going to be available in the market today? And what's the rental rate today or in the, you know, in a couple of years when the, when we're growing out of the space in this current location is going to determine how much it's going to cost to lease in a third, in a scenario, alternative number two of leasing, leasing scenario. And that's gonna kind of put a constraint on how much costs in terms of comparing to, you know, adding the other qualitative aspect of a headquarters expansion. It's gonna put it in, you know, put it over the headquarters, the benefits of, of expanding to the existing locations, the amenities and all that, you know, aspect we're adding to it. It's gonna make up for the costs of constructing. And the leasing rate itself is gonna determine, not, not, not that it's gonna determine, but it's gonna definitely put a, kind of a constraint on how much in budget you could potentially go up to. So it's not, we don't know at this point, because we don't know what that, you know, we have not gone through, completed the financial model. But definitely, you know, without even running the numbers, we know that, you know, obviously leasing is gonna be, because you're gonna be able to phase that approach as opposed to constructing and building out all the spaces in day one. So we know that from an economics perspective, that's gonna be less costly than building something from ground up, right? That itself is gonna determine or provide a kind of a boundary or constraint on how much of a headquarters expansion budget we can potentially go up to. Does that make sense?
It does, it does, but I, I, it's, it's a different way than I thought we would be approaching it, which would be to define what our needs are and then figure out how to best
Right.
deliver those at the lowest cost.
Right.
This seems to be a different approach that you're defining.
So we're looking at both ways as well, Lisa, if you want to address that.
Been aware of this. It's sort, it's sort of, it's sort of like saying, well, we can spend up to this much because, and that's, that's not usually the way I, I think we should be thinking about a budget.
Well, we are working with the architectural side and defining what would meet our business needs and setting a specific budget around that.
So how does that factor into this analysis?
Well, that, she'll, they'll be taking that number then and doing that cost comparison to a lease, a lease approach and seeing that.
That's the number that would be used.
And then factoring in the qualitative factors, and then you, you, you as the board would weigh that together. I mean, we are, we have to do the exercise you're saying as well. There has to be a very specific budgetary number that we think would support the construction of a facility. And that's, that's their job over here, to work through that design and, and show you that thinking. So you would take the design number and compare it to the lease number, and then add in the qualitative piece, and then we would make a decision together. So I, I, I absolutely want to make sure you, you, you see a very, there's a very elaborate budget exercise going on around the design part of it.
But the decision-making matrix doesn't seem to, that's, that's what I'm having a hard time with. I'm having a hard time understanding
Okay.
how this
Brings that number in.
This framework that only looks at financials as being weighted thirty percent, how that, what, I mean, how that, I guess, I guess how that drives the, the architectural definite, the definition of what we're trying to do architecturally.
I, I think that we're do, we're direct, what we're doing from an architectural perspective, we're doing first. So what we're doing is we're identifying through the design process what our needs are. What, what's gonna meet our needs for thirty years? Because this is a thirty-year decision. And we're, we're, we're building to a budget that will accomplish all of, all of the goals that we have for this particular long-term decision. And then that budget is gonna be what's put in the NPV analysis. And compared to apples to apples, what we could get as an acquisition, what we could get if we leased. And then our plan, my, my plan, Paul, too, is that number is probably gonna be different than it was in 2016. And so what we want to do to, to, is to make sure the board understands the differences in the, in the costs. And so what was provided to you in 2016, what we find meets our needs in 2019, 2020 numbers. And then that number is gonna be entered into this analysis as a comparison. So all the other
Okay.
acquisition and lease will, will be compared to whatever that number is. Does that answer your question?
It, it, it does. I mean, it, 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 because this seemed to, to skip over the description, the, the step that Jack just described.
Yeah, no, definitely. That is going.
I mean, this is a later, but, but I, I just want to make sure that when we're looking at, at a headquarters expansion, building a new, a new building, that we're not, that, that we, that we've, that we're, we've got constraints on that, on that planning, and that those constraints aren't just that, well, we can get something out here in the market by buying it, but, you know, building it is gonna be better for all of these non-financial reasons, and therefore, we can justify spending more money.
No.
That would be a wrong, seems to me, not a disciplined way of going about it.
And that's, and that's definitely not how we're doing it.
Thank you, thank you.
No.
All right, I want to do a time check. We still have another presentation. I have three more people in line to speak. We're supposed to be done by 10:30 on this item.